Good morning. I'd like to call the hearing of the Ventura County Planning Commission of November 19 to order. Would you please stand and join me in stating the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four on the agenda is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. I haven't received any cards, so I'm assuming that's not be an issue. Item five is approval of the September 24, 2009 minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is the approval of the October 1, 2009 minutes.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a question on that. If you turn to page five, please. The last sentence on the bottom states, page five, the last sentence, states that Rosemary Allison said that 147 horses would be allowed on each lot according to a memorandum from the watershed protection. That would really be a nitrate problem, I think, unless I'm reading that wrong.
No, I think it was for that, the entire undivided parcel.
On the lot instead of each lot, if we could change that to the.
The lot.
Okay, that's what I assumed. Okay, with that, are there any other questions on these minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item seven, approval of October 22, 2009 minutes.
Move approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number eight, LU-08-0086, DARA Design Group has sprinted its last naxol at Apple.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Adukas, Commissioner Ronstadt, Commissioner Wesner, and Chair Malater.
Okay, good morning.
Mr. Madeline, before you start, how long have we known each other now? Is it 92?
Yes, probably.
Was that when you started at the city?
That was, started with the city in Moore Park in 1987.
Okay, then I came on the commission in 90. Wow. One of us is getting old.
Would you please bring the other mic up? No, did the other one together because this system doesn't work very well. I don't think.
Try it now. Better?
That's better.
Little bit too short. Okay. The subject before you today is Sprint Nextel requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the continued operation and maintenance of an unmanned telecommunication facility that was previously approved as part of Conditional Use Permit 4775. Project site is 3945 West Pacific Coast Highway in Faria Beach. The two tax parcels are 060-380-305, which is this one right here, the majority site, and 060-380-090, which is right here, the railroad right-of-way. And this facility has a site number of CA-5440. Adjacent to the site, we have Faria County Park, the Faria Beach Homes, Pacific Coast Highway. To the east of the site is, right here, is a nursery for palm trees and other plants. North of the site between, is undeveloped, between the highway, main highway up here. You can also see, one at a time, please. You also see the vault's location right here. And right around here is where the other, the tower is, Pacific Coast Highway, Faria Beach Park, and the ocean. And also adjacent to the site, on separate tax lease parcels, are three additional wireless The one immediately to the west or to the east of this site is operated by AT&amp;T and Singular. That will be expiring in October 2, 2013. The next one over is operated by American Tower. A renewal for that conditional use permit is currently being processed. Also, the one to the east is operated by T-Mobile. That is, conditional use permit is currently being processed for renewal, but it's currently an incomplete application, but we have received a resubmit. So that'll give you a little bit of idea of what we have in the area. Here's another slide showing a little bit better details of the current site with their vault. The antennas on the pole next to the railroad tracks and the adjacent sites behind the screen of trees and shrubs right here, Pacific Coast Highway. This is some general information about the project. The applicant is DARA Design Group, and they have the location, the parcel. All of this information is in your reports. Have here the history of the site. It was previously approved as part of CUP 4775, which had expired, and this project currently is for a renewal of the CUP. As part of this application, no additional construction has been proposed. Currently, the tower is, that is in the railroad right-of-way, is 40 feet high with three antennas on top, pole is brown. The equipment is gray. The vault location in the other parcel is mostly underground with two air conditioning units on top surrounded by a chaming fence. Here's some photos of the site, just to give you a little bit of information. The photo on the top left is taken looking northwest from Pacific Coast Highway. Slide also on the top right is also took looking northwest from Pacific Coast Highway. You can see the tower right here. Slide in the lower left is of the equipment and the vault. And slide to the lower right again is the pole with the equipment which is located in the railroad right-of-way. These slides are of additional equipment on the site. You have the Singular Wireless Slide, site on the upper left, the American Tower Site, also further to the east in the upper right slide. The lower left slide is T-Mobile. The slide to the lower right is taken from the current site looking east, so you can see all of the equipment in one picture. This is a view looking southeast from Pacific Coast Highway towards the equipment. You can see the tops of the antennas above the tree lines. A number of palm trees have been planted on site as conditions from previous applications provide additional screening. Okay, here we have the site plan. This is the vault location right here with a line, utility line for power going across the railroad tracks to the pole. There's the railroad tracks. This is in addition the AT&amp;T Singular Site, which is a different application, different permit, at Pacific Coast Highway. This is a lease area plan. We have here the antenna. That is the vault. There are two gates to lead into the vault, which leads underground. Both the vault area and the lease area, 170 square feet. This is elevation of the equipment. There's the pole right here, and that's the vault. It's a little difficult to see in this slide. Okay, moving on. In order to approve this project, we have to make certain environmental determinations that this project is exempt from environmental review from Section 15301 of SEQA Guidelines because this is an existing private facility. We have made the determination that it is exempt because they are continuing the use with no additional equipment proposed. This project has also been reviewed by other county agencies for their environmental review Here's our screen for the findings. I'm not going to read them to you, however. The required findings and the R-Review response are in your packets, so I will not read them. The project has been reviewed towards all code findings. The planning department has reviewed the project and has also been reviewed by other county agencies, and approval of this permit with the proposed conditions will meet the Notice of the property. The project was sent to the Faria Beach Homeowners Association. We do not receive any response from them. All property owners within 300 feet and residents within 100 feet have been notified of the proposed project. A notice was placed in the Ventura County Star. I'd also like to bring up that we did receive an email and a phone call from a gentleman named Gilbert Richardson. He's one of the neighbors of the project in the Faria Beach Homes. He was expressing concern about the appearance of the facilities on the site. He did not know that all four projects were separate permits. He did not have many major concerns about, express concerns that they'd like the project denied or any changes. He did express concern that he would like additional screening placed on the entire site for further blending in of the equipment with the site to the east, which is the nursery. So he asked for a little bit more palm trees to be placed on this site and all of the other ones in the future. And also, should the planning commission choose to approve the project, the planning division will send a notice of final decision to the California Coastal Commission at the end of the appeal period. Based upon the information and evidence presented in our staff report and exhibits, the proposed project as conditioned meets the requirements of the Ventura County Coastal Zoning Organs and the coastal area plan. The project is consistent with the intent and provisions of the local coastal plan. The design of the proposed development is consistent and compatible with the surrounding communication facilities and meets the development standards of the coastal open space zone. Therefore, we, planning division recommends. We recommend that you take the following actions, that you find that the project's categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to the state SEQA guidelines and direct the planning division to prepare and file a notice of exemption pursuant to the state SEQA guidelines. Second, adopt and approve the proposed findings and approve Conditional Use Permit Number LU-08-0086, subject to the conditions provided in Exhibit 8, and designate the planning director and the resource management agency as the custodian and location of the record of proceedings. This concludes staff presentation. We're available for any questions. In addition, the applicant is in attendance if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Before we have questions, I'd like to ask at this time each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written expertise communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us in this matter. Commissioner Adukas?
I read the LA Times article talking about the recent court decision that says cities have the right to bar telecommunication towers.
I drove by Tuesday by the site, going to San Luis Obispo on another business, so other than that, nothing.
I too have driven by, viewed it from the highway.
I too have driven by the site. Questions of staff? Commissioner Adukas?
You said that the resident was interested in having more screening?
Yes.
And what was the county's response?
Said, if the commission decide, chooses to add for additional landscaping, we can. We can certainly condition that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wesner?
Yeah, as far as the time period for the CUP, I may have missed it, but on page 39, under time limits 3B, it's a 10-year, but then the director may grant additional, but it doesn't state a specific time. I know in the past, we've given the director the opportunity to extend it another 10 years or five years, but it's deliberately left out because it says the director can grant a time extension, but doesn't give any time of, type of frame. And again, it gets back to, if everything's copacetic, they've been good stewards, yada, yada, yada. If you want to extend another 10 years, there's no reason to bring it back, is my point.
Right, I agree. And usually, we do a 10 in turn.
Usually.
Yeah, so we need to go and make that correction back to a second 10. We wouldn't grant more than a 10-year without coming back, yes.
Commissioner Ronstadt?
I would like to know why the tower has not been removed to the site.
The tower itself, obviously visible from Pacific Coast Highway.
Right.
Why was it placed there and why not removed to?
It was, yeah, it was originally approved, I believe, in 1982. I don't know, they have not asked to have it removed, and in the previous renewal, the county has not asked them to move it back.
Can the applicant explain that situation to us? It's obviously, it's, you can observe it quite easily from the highway.
Yes.
And I was wondering why it was not part of the rest of the property?
Does anybody know?
If I can, that was my first thing, that's Commissioner 93. It has to do with the sighting that they have to do as far as getting the coverage because of the bend. I remember the great detail, which took me back to my horror days as a sophomore in high school, with geometry and the angles and the deflections and all these other issues. So that was the only site that they could, as far as their other, linking to their other equipment. So that became the spot. And then from there, became all the other discussions with the Coastal Commission and the FCC. What we didn't have back then was the knowledge or the technology to say, "Don't make it look like this, make it look like a tree," kind of thing. So that, my recollection, I just remember the painful trigonometry and geometry lessons we got that day as far as the sighting of the equipment.
I'd like the applicant at the appropriate time to comment on that issue. I also wondered, the cumulative effect of all these CUPs, do they affect each other, the communication sites, or have any effect on the local residences?
Well.
They have four communication CUPs.
Well, each tower, I would assume, operates on separate frequencies, so they don't interfere with each other.
I guess my question was, does the cumulative effect create any kind of problem we should know about?
I'm not prepared to answer that. I don't know the health benefits and risks.
Let me just jump in here for a second. The FCC has already, they have a telecommunications act, and they have already addressed the RF issue about the health risks and, from wireless communication facilities. So that is handled, and that's been handled in that act, and we don't look at it from a health risk assessment and the SEQA level.
Okay, thank you.
Except that there's two different things. There's radio frequency, and then there's non-ionizing radiation. And the reason why I know this is, I just have a lot of experience with these in the city of Thousand Oaks. And is there any county overseer of these cumulative impacts? Because I know each one by itself falls within the act's limitations, but perhaps the applicant is the one to answer that question about the cumulative impact. I share that concern.
I also am quite concerned about how ugly that pole is on Pacific Coast Highway, which is a scenic highway. You can't miss it. You drive around the corner, and this big brown thing stares up at you. It also says it's a telephone pole, and to me, a telephone pole has telephone lines on it. It's a pole, it's a communications pole.
It's just a utility pole for the equipment.
Yeah, and I'd like to call your attention to page 27 in the agenda. Okay, on condition. On the proposed finding, number two, if you drop down to the last sentence that begins, "As shown in Exhibits 4 and 5, the existing telecommunication facility is consistent in size, scale, and materials with the existing telecommunication facilities on separate lease holds within the same parcel, and is screened by shrubs and trees from Pacific Coast Highway." Therefore, the project would be consistent with the requirement. That pole is not screened by shrubs or anything from Pacific Coast Highway. Therefore, this finding has not been met.
The other equipment is?
The other is, but it's still.
The others are.
If you look at that slide you showed, it's on page, they call it landscape screening of site. You can still see some of the towers beyond, but this big tower standing by itself on Pacific Coast Highway is not screened, and it hasn't been screened, and this condition has not been met.
This tower cannot be screened because it is in a railroad right-of-way. It is screened from certain angles as you're driving along the highway, but the other equipment is screened.
I don't care, I don't really, it doesn't make me too different, how it's screened.
Right.
It isn't screened, and it is supposed to be screened, and if it can't be screened, it should be moved. But anyway, that's something that the applicant, when we have the public hearing, but those are, those are my concern. And this, I think, was also the concern of the email from the resident who said screening on the entire site was the man from the beach who said that.
Yes.
So these will be my questions. Why can't this tower be moved? And how can it be less obnoxious?
Well, currently, they are not asking for any modifications to the tower, either new, any new equipment or any new changes to the tower. So as such, and I think my manager could answer that, but I don't believe we have the ability to make them move a tower as part of the condition of approval unless they're changing any of the design of it or making changes.
But this condition, I'm assuming, was one of the original conditions that they agreed to back before 2003?
Mm-hmm.
And it has not been met?
At the time the original permit was approved, there was no requirement for any landscaping around that utility pole.
You mean, this is a new finding? This wasn't in the original CUP? This number two proposed finding, the project is compatible with the character of surrounding development?
Well, what I was saying was, at the time it was originally approved, they did not require, there was no requirement for landscaping around this utility pole with the antennas. So that was not required to be screened.
But the condition states that it's supposed to be, that the existing telecommunication facilities on separate lease holds on Pacific Coast Highway and is screened by shrubs.
Commissioner Malatar?
The tower is part of the CUP?
Yeah.
Commissioner Malatar, that's the difference between a condition and a finding. I think what Mr. Madeline is trying to say, that screening of the tower itself was not a condition of the 1983 permit, and this finding appropriately should have said not the tower itself was screened by vegetation, but the equipment cabinet is screened by vegetation. So it wasn't, it wasn't a requirement to the prior permit. It could be a requirement of this permit, and I think it would be good to hear from the applicant the issues of the railroad right-of-way and if we can plant some additional trees there.
Thank you. I'll wait till we hear from the applicant. Are there any other questions for staff? Thank you. I now like to open the public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant.
Eric Little.
I'm sorry, would you please state your name and address?
Eric Little, DARA Design, 250 El Camino Real, Tustin, California. And I think we probably want to get right to the questions. So we concur with staff, and we'd like to have our CUP renewed, but please ask me whatever you have, and I'll answer to the best of my ability.
Commissioners?
Hit start.
You want to say?
Question.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I had a question regarding the location of the tower. I understand that there was a pre-existing Conditional Use Permit, and it was placed there, but can you tell me why it was placed, where it is placed? And, go ahead.
As it was approved back in 1982, I do not specifically know why it was placed there at that time, although I would say Commissioner Wesner is probably right in that they needed to be able to connect to the other sites. So in order to do that, they had to have a certain angle around that point. But, you know, specifics as to why it was placed there in 1982, I do not have.
Has the technology changed that it has to be at that point? Do you know?
The Nextel technology has not significantly changed since it was implemented. They use the same equipment, the same frequencies, the same, you know, push-to-talk technology. So I would say that it has not significantly changed.
Can you think of any way that that tower can be shielded or hid from, or made to look, maybe branches going out of the side of the pole or something, but something to make it look less obnoxious?
Well, wood poles are usually just direct berry poles, and that's probably how we were able to get it into the railroad right-of-way. Otherwise, you'd have to dig a fairly large hole in the ground next to a railroad track, and that's probably would pose some safety issues. But, you know, short of swapping it out or doing something like that, I don't know how we could significantly alter its appearance.
So we don't have an answer as to why that tower is where it is and how it could be moved or when it could be moved? We have no answers for that?
I don't know. I'd need to have an RF engineer with me or consult one from the company before I can answer that question.
I'm just surprised you don't have someone here who would be technologically intelligent enough to respond to those questions. You know, you're asking for a project to be approved for 10 years. That's very important, and I know these projects are important, and there's always questions about them. I would assume that you would know that there might be some questions, especially about the pole.
There are usually questions about new projects, but projects that have been existing for 27 years usually don't get a lot of these kind of questions, but, you know, I'd be happy to address them. I just didn't know there was going to be an issue. Not me personally. I'd have to get someone here to address them. I don't have the knowledge of RF engineering to answer those questions.
Is your background in real estate, then?
It is.
Any other questions for commissioners?
I'm sorry. Well, following up on my colleague's question about cumulative impact and how it relates to the other facilities in the area, that would be handled by an RF engineer, is that correct?
Be hired by, handled by an RF firm that would be able to do a cumulative analysis, yeah.
Okay. And are you aware that there are any standards for those cumulative impacts, or are they handled on a project-by-project basis?
Well, there are cumulative emission standards that are set by, oh, should I want to say, or?
It's federal law.
Yeah. So, you know, we'd have to do the study and make sure that they fell within those guidelines. So, you know, we'd have to do the study and make sure that they fell within those guidelines. Generally speaking, towers, you know, towers that I've seen studied in the past are usually under the 1% of public exposure threshold. So even if there were four or five of them there, you'd be at 4% or 5%.
When are these routinely performed, these analyses?
They're usually performed at, you know, when you're installing a new site where there are other existing sites.
So are you familiar at all with what the other, who the last man in was?
Well, I don't know that, no.
Okay.
Staff would probably know that.
Thank you.
Chair.
You probably can't answer this, so I'm going to direct you to County Council, just for direction purposes. He stated that this is in the railroad right-of-way, so I have to, you know, feeling, having dealt with this a couple of times in my practice, that there may be some handcuffs that either the county or the applicant cannot deal with, that there's kind of a permission process that has to go. I know how powerful the railroads are in the right-of-ways. Can you give any direction, because I don't think he probably has the knowledge.
It's a PUC-regulated matter. Since the railroads are under PUC regulation, the right-of-way has to go through their understandings and their agreements and their regulations with the PUC. So you're right. I mean, this is not a simple issue of moving it to a different location. If it's in the railroad right-of-way, it is governed by PUC regulations and whatever understanding. I don't know what's, is it Union Pacific? What is it?
That, I don't know that.
I don't know the railroad that goes through there. Whatever they have as to that right-of-way, that would govern.
Okay. So we might want to give him a condition, and then he could sit there and say, no, that's not applicable.
Well, we'd have to see whether or not it conflicts with what the railroad has with regards to the PUC regulations on their right-of-way.
County Council, do you believe it would be difficult to, would it be as difficult to remove something from a railroad right-of-way as it would to install it?
I'm not the best person to ask you about how easy something is to remove it. I mean, again, this is, you're bringing in another government agency here, the PUC, and another player, which is the railroad, into this equation of Sprint coming in for a simple extension of their CUP. So that's a matter of increasing our calculus here, and I'm not prepared to answer the ease with which something can be removed or not.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Would you like to have the opportunity to have an RF engineer come and assist you? Would you like to perhaps make a phone call now? We can even recess, or, you know, and find out if you want to do that?
There wouldn't be any way I could get somebody here today. I would need to have them come back at another time in order to make that happen. You know, I don't know if you're familiar, but Sprint is significantly downsized recently, so getting an RF engineer here today would probably be impossible.
Is it something that you would like to have at some point? Because we do have...
If you would like one here, I can certainly get one here at another hearing.
Okay.
I certainly would like that. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much. I have no cards for people opposed or in favor of the requested action.
I'd like to jump in and give my perspective regarding this. There, a lot of things have changed since 1982. A lot of things has changed since the 1996 Telecommunications Act. Lot of advances in technology. It's no longer purely line-of-sight. So in my dreams, I wished that when there was this huge push for these, for this technology, that there could have been coordination and cooperation and planning instead of, you know, fierce competition to get your antennas out there in order to, you know, serve customers. I wish there could have been more cohesive and sensitive sighting and design of the support structures of these different antenna. You've got whip antenna, you've got panels, you've got dish and array. And none of that can be, you can't prefer one over the other. You can't say, oh, I want all of the antennas to be this small. There needs to be competition, and I'm aware of that. But the support structures and all of the equipment that's needed to support this technology, that is within our purview. In a recent court decision that I just read about, that talks about specifically the visual impact of these, that in, in, in Palos Verdes Estates, they were sued, and the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals sided with the seaside community that turned them down. This is not exactly the same, because this is, this is a renewal of something that they already have. But if I had my druthers, I would have, instead of having this antenna farm look really unsightly for Faria Beach, on the beautiful coastline, if we could have had some kind of structure where these things could have been screened, and even if you couldn't make them look invisible, or make them look like a tree, you could make it look like a lighthouse, or, you know, I've seen some of these things that look like boulders, and unless you know, you wouldn't know. And in Thousand Oaks, they have them in the building on top, and they're huge, and people don't, they don't worry about them, they're not vexated by them at all, because they don't even know they're there. But it needles me that every time I go past, and I remember in the 90s when these things started going in, that people said, we don't want an antenna farm, and that's exactly what they got. And it looks terrible. And it doesn't have to be that way. So I'm not inclined to support their extension. I think, you know, do better. We know more now. We can do better. I think we should.
Thank you. Commissioner, what's that?
I have a question of County Council. We have an expired CUP, is that correct? I don't know if you can hear me. We have an expired...
I'm looking at the client records. They're saying yes.
Yes. So what right of any do they have to operate under the expired CUP? None?
They have the ability to operate under their application for an extension of a CUP, if I'm not mistaken, under the current situation.
Yeah. The permit was expired before they filed the application.
Okay.
So in this instance, they really don't have the right to operate.
Okay. I have a question for you. The proposed finding, number two, which reads that the project is screened by shrubs and trees from Pacific Coast Highway, obviously doesn't pertain to the tower, and that's one of the proposed findings that we are required to make. I assume that's one of the findings we are required to make without screening. Can we make that finding? I have difficulty.
I would have difficulty, too, in the way that it was written. I would suggest that we, that your commission consider a continuance of the item until we can work with the applicant on screening to address your issues about maybe the replacement. I know that we have RF maps that come in, and they show us the need, but when I looked in the file a moment ago, I didn't see the need for, I didn't see any sort of analysis for a shorter tower, which is what we usually do. Show us the RF for what you have now. Show us how you can do it differently with whips. We do replace antennas with whips all the time. We replace them with trees. We replace them with palm trees. We replace them with water towers. We put them on buildings. This particular one and the location of it, I haven't seen the lighthouse before. I'm not sure. Sometimes those kind of things go over, less than just having the antenna out there. But I think that there is some questions to be answered that I would like, even from my support of this project right now, a continuance of the hearing until we can have a little bit more time on this one.
Thank you. We're still have, we're still in the public hearing. We haven't started deliberations yet, so I'd like to know if we need any closing comments by staff. By staff.
I don't have any closing comments.
Okay. Does any Commissioner have any questions of staff at this point?
If we did move for a continuance, so that we could have an RF engineer answer the questions with regard to cumulative effect, the types of antennas that, and the height, what the director said regarding the height, I guess those are alternatives to the design, and not the location, but could we also have an RF engineer talk about moving it? And what else would we get from a continuance? Could we get any coordination with the other applicants that are coming forward soon?
As I understood your testimony, did you say that they were in the process right now?
We are currently processing LU-08 number 20 for American Tower, and also we have an application from AT&amp;T for their tower.
So I would...
One of the towers is still active until 2013, I believe, or 2016.
So I would say the answer would be yes, since they're all in here for some sort of a review.
Yes, Commissioner.
Definitely would add into that, this whole issue of the railroads and the right-of-way and the PUC. We may like to have certain things, but if it's in their jurisdiction, we've got to make sure we're not conditioning something they can't meet simply because of law.
And I'd like to add, you showed a slide of the landscape screening of the site. I think that, I think the screening of the other projects, as well as, I guess I shouldn't talk about it, because this project, the only thing visible that I can see is that tower on Pacific Coast Highway. The rest is going to be a vault, I think. So that slide you showed about the landscaping screening, I think probably applies to some of the other facilities that are coming up soon. So if anything in this project is visible from the highway, I'd like to have it screened, or know why we can't. That's my comment.
Or moved.
Or what?
Or moved.
Or moved, yes. First choice would be moved. Any other questions of staff? Now I'd like to close the public hearing, and Commissioners, it's time for deliberation. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to a date selected by staff and the applicant to resolve these issues.
Second? Do you want a time and date certain? Do you want to establish the date now, or do you want us to re-leave it?
Whatever's appropriate according to policy.
And could you also be more specific as to direction given to staff in your motion? I think that would be the best thing to make the motion as clean as possible, rather than go into non-deliberation portions of the transcript. And I think you need to, if there is a date certain, that would be the best thing to do with this, is to set it for a date certain. Can we do that at this point in time?
Commissioner Westner?
Do we have a date? I'll amend my motion.
We have a date. I see on your agenda of January 14th. That would probably give us enough time to take a look at those issues.
You need to consult the applicant.
Do you think that would give you enough time, January 14th?
It would, except what I'm hearing, it sounds like the Commissioners would like some collaboration with the other carriers, and I'm not sure what their timeframes are for this. Is that, am I hearing that correctly? You'd like us to collaborate on this renewal in some way?
That's what I would like.
First, I don't need to have that requirement.
If that requirement is going to hold up, you're getting this CUP approved. I don't have any problem with coordinating. I think the information that you're going to bring back is going to answer Commissioner Adukas' question about the cumulative effect of any of these facilities. Am I right on that? Is that what you want?
At this point, I don't have enough information to know if it's possible, just from an engineering point of view, whether or not they can relocate this particular support structure. If they could, I think that would help with being able to screen it or disguise it. So is that clear enough?
Yeah. All right. I'll amend my motion to a date certain of January 14th, and that we are looking for the following. An appropriate technological individual to provide cumulative impact information, that analysis of either screening, moving, or reducing the scope size and scale, including a possible relocation, and then also any information regarding the right-of-way in the railroads area and the PUC.
I'd second that motion.
Any other discussion? Yes.
I, for one, can't make the finding, number two, with no screening on the tower. I just can't do it. So, I mean, I was going to put this project down today, and I'm afraid the applicant may feel blindsided by all this, and I apologize for that, but this is a matter of first impression for me. And for me to make a finding that says something like this has been screened in one of the most sensitive areas of our county, it hasn't been screened, so I'd have to vote no.
Thank you. I, Commissioner Westner? I, we need these, we need these facilities. I don't think that's the issue, and I in no way want to stop the facility even for any reason. We just want to modify it on the request and on the motion. So are there any other discussion on the motion?
Just for the sake of clarity, the cumulative effect that you're speaking of is a radio frequency cumulative effect. Is that correct?
Well, see, in my mind, it's not just, and it may not be within our purview to have, to ask for that to be done or something. If that's just part of them paying their franchise fees, I don't want to muddy the waters here. I know what the limits of our discretion is. I think antenna farm is a perfect way of talking about the cumulative visual effect. And then from an RF point of view, whether or not these things, when you have them closely sided together, who's in charge of making sure that there isn't a cumulative radio frequency, or, you know, any of that, if there's a cumulative impact with regard to that.
So just so that I'm clear, and so that the Commission understands what it is asking for, it is asking for a cumulative, someone with the technological wherewithal to respond to questions of cumulative effect with regards to radio frequency and visual impact. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to continue this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item nine, LU-08 dash 0141, Crown Castle International, applicant. We'll have the staff report.
The item before you is LU-08141, conditional use permit for Crown Castle, requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the continued operation and maintenance of an unmanned telecommunications facility that was previously permitted as part of CUP 4093. The project address is 5630 Pacific Coast Highway. However, the actual site location is on Laguna Peak, or actually just east of the actual peak itself. Laguna Peak itself is right about here. Laguna Peak itself is right about here. The assessor parcel number was recently changed from two three four dash zero dash one one zero dash two eight five, which is what it was filed under, to the new parcel number two three nine zero zero five zero zero two five. Facility site number is eight seven one seven zero nine. As a matter of clarification, most of the equipment on Laguna Peak is right here, this is owned and operated by the Navy for Point Magoo facility. This site is actually located to the east, right here, further along the Laguna Peak Access Road, and there's another tower right here, CUP forty nine twenty-three, which was approved separately and is on a separate assessor parcel number. The equipment itself, we'll mention, is visible to the north, but it's not visible to the south from CU, from Pacific Coast Highway, the, like the Sycamore Creek area, or to the west from Point Magoo. And at nighttime, there is no lighting on the tower, at least on that I have seen, I've driven down Petronero Road, Fifth Street, 101, and Lewis Road, and I have not seen any nighttime illumination on the tower. This, this equipment right here, as I mentioned, is on a separate parcel that will be expiring December 18th, 2016. Here's a further little zoomed-in view of the equipment, which is right here, the equipment building and the tower, access road, this is the other equipment on another parcel, with one tower and a second tower. This permit was originally approved on June 17th, 1982, and expired March 2nd, 2002. Crown Castle's applying for new CUP to continue the operation of the site and the facility. Approval of CUP will abate a zoning violation number CV zero nine dash zero zero one three, which was for the expired permit. Okay, the facility is a 100-foot-tall tower with six broadcast, six microwave, 15 omnis antennas, that is a correction from the main, from the report, one planer and two Yagi antennas, and a 600-square-foot equipment building with three roof-mounted antennas and ground-mounted transformers. The color and design of the equipment antennas have not changed since originally built, and the applicant is not proposing any changes, no additional construction is proposed. Planning has no record of any comments or complaints being filed against the operation, color, or design of the facility at the time this report was written, however, we did receive a contact, which I will bring up in a minute. Project is consistent with the general plan, land use designation of open space, the coastal area plan designation, and the zoning designation of coastal open space, Santa Monica Mountains overlay zone. There's a slide of the site plan, this is the Laguna Peak Access Road, there's about 440-foot separation between the two projects. This is the project's site area with the tower and the equipment building, ground-mounted And large site plan just of the area, with a tower, equipment building, roof-mounted antennas, and again, the elevation of the tower. And based upon SEQUA guidelines, the project is exempt from environmental review, Section 15301 of SEQUA guidelines for the operation permitting and minor alteration of existing private structures, facilities, and, and equipment. Project has also been reviewed by other county agencies for environmental findings and code compliance. Again, the required findings and planning review response are in your packets, so I will not review them in detail. Application has been reviewed towards all code findings and the Santa Monica Mountains findings and standards. Planning has reviewed the application, and approval of the permit with the proposed conditions of approval will meet the required findings. Again, a slide of our Santa Monica Mountains findings, the applicant findings in Santa Monica Mountains usually refer to new development, this is an existing project with no proposed And notice was sent to, for review of the California State Parks, all property owners within 300 feet of the project site, and again, of course, a notice of hearing was placed in the Ventura County Star. On November 16th, I received a phone call from Suzanne Good of the California State Parks, and she outlined a few of her concerns. First, what are the allowed uses in the zone? I was, reviewed that with her and directed her to our website, so she knew exactly what uses are allowed in the coastal open space zone. Her second concern was that lighting on the tower was excessive, and she was referring mainly to the, the Navy's installation, which, as you know, has lights, especially as you can see as you're going down Pacific Coast Highway around the bend by Point Magoo. Her next concern was that additional equipment has been added over the years. Again, she did, we discussed this, and she did mention that she was referring mainly to the Navy facility. On this site, all the equipment has been, has approved with a few modifications over the years, but not, no additional equipment. And her next concern was that the color of the tower is too visible. The color of the tower has not changed since has, has already been approved, and we have not received any complaints about the, the tower. And should the condition, commission approve the project, we will send a notice of final decision to the California Coastal Commission, of course, at the end of the appeal period. Our recommended actions, based upon the information presented in the staff report and exhibits, the proposed project meets the requirements of the county zoning ordinance and the coastal area plan, is consistent with the intent and provisions of the LCP, also consistent with the requirements of the coastal open space, Santa Monica Mountains overlay zone. Therefore, based on the information evidence presented today and in the package, these submittal materials, the Planning Division recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions: find that the project is categorically exempt from SEQUA's pursuant to the state SEQUA guidelines, and direct the Planning Division to prepare and file a notice of exemption pursuant to the state guidelines of SEQUA, adopt and approve the proposed findings and approve conditional use permit, case number LU-08 zero one four one, subject to the conditions provided, and designate the Planning Director and Resource Management Agency as the custodian and location of the record of proceedings. This will conclude our staff presentation, staff is available for any questions you have, and the applicant is in attendance for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Before any questions, I'd like to ask each planning commissioner to state on their record whether he, whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter.
I have no disclosure.
I have no disclosure.
Nor I.
Nor I.
Thank you. Any questions of staff at this point? No, Adukas?
I'm sorry, could you go over again your conversation with, is it Susan Good?
Suzanne Good.
Suzanne Good.
Good.
And what is her position, what were the nature of her questions, and what, how was that addressed?
Unfortunately, I, we had this conversation with her after the record was presented, so I could not get the information into the staff report or the PowerPoint presentation, otherwise I would have, you would have had a copy of that. However, she's a senior environmental consultant with the California State Parks, and they're, I think it's Los, their office in, I think it's like Calabasas, can't remember the street name, something Virginus Road or something. She had, mainly her concern was, first, what uses were allowed in this coastal open space zone, because she wanted to know if, since it's their state park lands in, in the vicinity, what other uses could, somebody could apply for. So for that, I referred her, while we were on the phone, to our website, so she could look down and see exactly what the uses were. Her second concern was that there was excessive lighting of the facility at night, and it turns out she was referring mostly to the Navy facility, she didn't, wasn't exactly sure which of the, she thought we were, this, this case was, request was for the Navy, was something on the Navy site. However, this site does not have any lighting at night, at least none that I have seen. I haven't been on there at night, but I have driven around the area. Her next concern was the color of the tower, that she thought it might be a little bit too light, and that she was wondering if, that it might be too visible.
And, and how did, how did the county respond?
Well, we mentioned that the, that the color was as originally approved, the applicant has not received any, has not asked for any changes, we have not received any complaints about the color. She did not say that she wanted it, it repainted, she did say there might be somebody here today at this hearing to discuss it, and I, from what I can, I have not seen any other person from the State Parks or herself come in. And, I'll check here, hmm, make sure I didn't forget anything. And also that equipment has been added over the years, and for that, I, when I did discuss with her, she also said she was referring to the, the Navy facility. So those are the areas that we, we discussed.
Okay. What's a Yagi antenna?
I don't know exactly, the, I think the applicant is here, they can best discuss some of these technical differences. It's, apparently there's a different function, different shape, different frequencies possibly.
But again, this is visible to those using the Santa Monica Mountains, that, that open space, you really have to hike in-
Yeah.
-in order to, to come across this.
Right.
Circle X is not concerned about it, any of the, any of the people that, that have ongoing hikes through the area?
Right. This, this application was circulated to the California State Parks, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and there's a few others, agencies down there. I did not receive any response from any of them until the November 16th phone call from Suzanne Good. So they did not respond with any concerns. The site is accessible only by the Laguna Peak Access Road, which is locked-
Yeah.
-unless you want to hike overland, there are no other trails to this site, at least not that I'm aware of.
There, there are trails in the area where you can, you can view it, you know, just from the trails.
There could be.
Yeah, I, my kids are in scouts, so I've been everywhere. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
Just again, condition 3B, granting the director an additional time period, to be specific, rather than just as extension, and I would be comfortable granting a second ten-year period. So, we get to that point, I'll include that in the motion.
What, I, I forgot to ask a question, this expired in 2002?
Yes.
What's the delay in, in, have they been operating, or is, is this going to re-up anything?
Well, it's just a replacement of an expired conditional use permit.
Uh-huh, and it expired in 2002?
Yes.
And it's 2009?
Right.
Any explanation?
I don't know why it was-
Okay, I think we'll get it from the applicant. Thank you.
But, but will, but renewal of this permit will abate the violation, the violation is for operation of an expired permit.
I got it.
Thank you, Craig. I'd like to now open the public hearing, and I have two cards. We'll hear first from the applicant, and I have another supportive recommended action card, so we'll hear first from the applicant, and people who are in favor of the requested action, so would the applicant please state his name and address?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, John Dome, D.O.H.M. I'm the zoning manager for the west area of Crown Castle, we are the facility operator and owner. My address is 510 Castillo Street, Suite 302, Santa Barbara, California. Good catch, Commissioner Adukas, I was going to explain exactly why this has been expired and why we haven't renewed. Crown Castle owns and manages telecommunications infrastructure, we are not a carrier, obviously, we own 24,000 sites nationwide, and we own a significant portfolio in Australia as well. Most of the portfolio is acquired, so they are built sites. In 2000, in January 2007, we acquired 12,000 sites from Global Signal, this was one of those sites. The permit had already been expired for five years, as you could appreciate, it took us a good part of a year just to get our arms around what we had. So we didn't even discover until everything was entered into our database, and we started printing reports that we had expirations. And we had these all over the place candidly. So, we have proactively started to renew these things, and we came forward to the county once we discovered this, and we intend on doing that with each of our sites in Ventura County now. I think we own about 15 sites in Ventura County now, so that's the explanation, we had no idea until recently, and once we found out, we applied for the permits, so. But, but that's all I really wanted to say, is really just introduce our company to you, we plan on being here for a long time and operating, and if staff or commissioners ever have any questions about our sites or telecommunications in general, you're certainly welcome to reach out to me.
Well, I, I am curious, what's a Yagi antenna?
Yagi antenna is kind of like the old television-style antenna, you know, they kind of look like a little-
Okay, I know which one that, okay.
Seen them on, yeah.
All right, it's nothing new.
It's a communication antenna that you might see with park rangers, for example, or-
How many carriers do you have on this equipment?
You know, the one thing I forgot to bring was our tenant list, I want to say we have seven.
There, there are seven in the area? Wow.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about on our tower itself. There, there's a number of towers along this ridgeline.
But there are, but there, but the carrier, you are not a carrier-
No.
-you're the, you're the support.
Yes.
The antenna, there are seven different companies?
We have, I believe there's, I believe we have seven, but, but one of the conditions I noted was to get you a thorough, comprehensive list, so we have a baseline starting point. Now, some of those are, the IRS is up there, for example, I don't know what they do, there's other emergency services people that are up there, there's, there could be a, you know, a courier service-type antenna, you know, we, we get all types of things, so it's not necessarily a traditional carrier that you're used to seeing, such as Verizon or AT&amp;T.
How much room for growth do you have on this site?
I, I'm not exactly sure, I would, I would assume we have a lot of latitude for growth, we, you know, you have to look at, obviously, the ground lease, we lease our ground space, it is a private parcel, so we lease ground space, and then the tower, the, the growth on the tower is based on structural capacity of the tower, so, and it's not as much as you would think.
You're not going to, it's not going to be like those telephone poles that all went, because there is too much stuff.
No, no, before we had any new tenants, in fact- Before we had any new tenants, in fact, we do this annually anyway. We inspect all our towers, as you would guess, um, three times a year. And we also, uh, before anybody's added, we do a thorough structural analysis, so.
Uh-huh. Would that come back to us, those antenna? So that's, any, any of those applications, have you had someone new, or if you had an expansion, that would come back to the county?
I would assume there's a modification.
I'm getting a nod.
Application, I'm not exactly sure, but if, if we're supposed to, we will, let's just put it that way.
And what about working with Suzanne Good, uh, and, and the recreation area, the, the parks, um, in order to, this is a, this is a vital link, this support structure and this location. Uh, it, it's, it's important to link to the other, uh, sites, but in the area, uh, when you come along, I, I assume you've never hiked in the area and you've.
I have, no, I haven't.
Yeah. It, um, it's impressively large.
Yes.
And, 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 uh, that, and particularly the other equipment that, uh, has to do with the Navy, um, you know, you can't even get near it.
Yes.
And you shouldn't. You don't want, you don't want anybody climbing on the, on the equipment. But is there anything to, that you could do with, in terms of, of painting this, uh, the support structure, to, to make it less intrusive for the area? What would be involved in something like that?
Well, candidly, we would oppose that condition. That is probably a $75,000 paint job you're talking about.
Okay.
Actually, the steel structures, in our experience, the way they weather, actually, at those distances, look fine. I mean, to do any other type of pay, I mean, even thinking out loud, I can't think of a color that would be a better color.
The only ones that I've seen that have any kind of success are the, the camouflage ones. There's one off of the, the 405, but it's a completely different situation. It's right off the freeway.
Right off the freeway.
There are tons of homes in the area.
I know.
This is, this is much more, uh.
Yeah, the one by Gervail Center, I think you might be referring to. Yes, I'm aware of that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is.
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
Different, because the only portion that might be in question is, is maybe the upper half daylights a bit from certain views, but.
But that wouldn't work, you wouldn't.
But it wouldn't work.
No.
Because you're still, you'd make it even darker, frankly, for that, so.
Uh-huh. I'm sure, I'm sure that, um, I would guess that, um, that Ms. Good's concerns had to do with just, you know, you're hiking along, and then all of a sudden, whoa, what's that?
And I think she was looking at the wrong tower. Our tower is not lit, for the record, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for satisfying my curiosity.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I had a question, sir.
John?
John? It states in the agenda that there's no water or sewer facilities at the site. Does anybody stay overnight up there? Are there bunks, or?
Uh, no, sir.
Yeah, there's nothing.
No, no.
You've probably been there, so you can see it.
I, I'm not admitting to actually getting up that close to it.
Okay. Thank you, that was my question. No other questions? Thank you. Uh, did you wish to speak?
Uh, John is representing Crown Castle. I'm actually, uh, representing Crown Castle as the applicant. I was working with staff, um, working with the CUP renewal. I wanted John to come up and kind of give some history as to why the CUP was, uh, expired and how we got to where we are.
Uh, please, would you state your name and address?
I'm sorry. My name is Tricia Knight. Uh, live at 123C Cliff Drive, Pismo Beach. Wanted to, uh, point out a couple of quick notes. Um, our goal here is to, um, permit everything that is currently on site and to bring it to that baseline that John was talking about, so that we're very clear on what's on the tower. Um, with that said, I would like to make a couple of corrections to the project description on page two of your staff report. Uh, there, at the top, uh, first paragraph, it calls out, uh, six broadcast antennas. There are actually eight. And then a little bit further down, it calls out 12 omni antennas. There are actually 15. The rest of the project description is accurate. Until we get down to two ground-mounted transformers, that is accurate, but there is also one standby generator, generator on, on site already. So we just want to be inclusive of that. Um, and that would also include the project description on page two of your conditions of approval. So just wanted to make that clear. Um, and I'm also here to answer any, any questions, other questions that you might have. There was a cumulative radio frequency report, uh, given to staff as part of our application. If you have any desire to look at that, it shows we are in FCC compliance. As you know, this is far removed from any, um, population areas, but that's here for your review as well. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from commissioners?
You say you.
Is part of your application process through the FCC, uh, some sort of screening for cumulative effect? Is that what you just said?
No. Um, what the, well, and it's not even the FCC that mandates it. We do have to file all of our facilities with them. Um, but the county of Ventura mandates as part of their application process that we hire an outside third party, in this particular instance, because the facility was already there, to go up to the site and take readings, to show that we are within those safety thresholds. And this third-party report does do that, and so it's on file with the county to verify what they already want verified, which is just that we're in compliance with the SEC guidelines. Does that help? Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
Any other questions?
To your knowledge, have you had any problems with, um, taggers? Anyone who, uh, fiddles with the equipment?
No, not, not with these remote facilities. And some of the, the ones that are closer to obvious population areas, yes, that can be a problem. But this one is not open to the public behind a lock gate. I'm sure their people do actually hike up that far, but, um, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
They're probably too tired by the time they get.
That's a big hike, if you've ever seen the hill, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh. Isn't it, you?
I have a, I have a speaker card. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, sir. My name is Roke.
Okay, Roke. Uh, you said you support rec, oh, please come up and state your name and address.
My name is Roke, for the record.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I'm suffering some injuries, so I don't want to spend much time with you today.
Okay.
I heard a lot of questions concerning the Yagi antenna.
Uh, please.
And I'm also an engineer, but I'm a landscaper.
Would you also state your address?
Um, it's 1-884-OHI, but I'm looking for another address in the OHI areas.
Thank you.
Um, sir, I am deeply concerned about some environmental problems. And there aren't very many people that are qualified in my areas. Some of the information is classified, but I am working as much as I can. Um, your questions concerning the Yagi antenna, um, you would have to research the company's Qualcomm, the frequency changes allowed for new designs in antennas. It's a San Diego-based company. I recommended Wavtech at the time and Dance Vac. But that was 1994 to 1996. I just want you all to know that I'm in the area now, and I, I am a landscaper, and I do landscaping work and cleanup. I also do fire inspection and cleanup. But I'm going to ask that you excuse me this morning, because I just left the emergency room. I got in an accident on my mountain bike riding down from OHI. If you will all see you in time. The other card I submitted is for my meeting, because I like smaller meetings. I'll probably be taking my meeting in OHI. I had one last. So, if you will all take, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Roke. I, I have no other speaker cards, so we'll have any, any closing comments by staff?
I have one closing, uh, correction in the report. Inadvertently, some information was put in on finding number two. Uh, it does not affect the meeting, the finding, but.
What is the page, please?
I need to point out where it does say that the equipment is screened by shrubs and trees. That is, that sentence needs to be removed. And I figured, I figured, unfortunately, it got in inadvertently, so you'll have to apologize, but.
Page 56, paragraph two.
Fifty-six.
It was the one-tenth of a percent of the cut and paste which unfortunately slid through. So I don't want you to get the idea that this is screened by shrubs and trees. There are natural shrubs around the site, but not enough to screen, so I don't, don't want that to cause any confusion.
I'm not following you.
Oh. He copied and pasted, and it has this little border flag. That it's screened by shrubs and trees. He wants this emitter, right here.
Yeah, I don't want, no.
Screened by shrubs and trees. It's not. You can't.
No.
You could put IB on it.
Are, are you asking that that be, uh, scratched from the finding?
Yes.
That proposed shrubs?
That, or just the section where it says, "and is screened by shrubs and trees." That is not the case, but it does not affect meeting the finding, in staff's opinion.
I don't, I don't know why you want to do that. I mean, it's, this is a finding, and this is, this is one of our concerns, that it's not. And you're asking it to be struck out, so we can't.
It's too big.
Uh, in, I've, uh, I've seen this, uh, once on a hike. It's, uh, it's, it's quite a large, uh, support structure, and, uh, there is no way that you could screen it.
I'm sorry, I, I'm on page 56.
Yes.
And you, this is, this is the project on Pacific Coast Highway.
Correct. Up on.
And so you're asking that that be screened, be removed for the, for the facility, for the CUP up on the, up on Point Magoo?
Correct.
That's fine, I have no problem with that.
Right. I'm just saying that it says that it is, it says in the report, it is screened by shrubs and trees, and that is not an accurate statement.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to jump in here for just a little bit of clarification on this staff report. I've seen a couple of things that I want clarified. Let me just start out on page 52. 52, and we're talking about the evidence and proposed permit findings. It looks like perhaps when we prepared this staff report, there could have been some cutting and pasting that went into the, you know, from the prior to this one. And so I just want to look at the evidence here on page 52, um, 1A, F1A, general plan. There is a, it said it's consistent and compatible with the general plan and policies, and then it went on to list some, uh, sections out of the zoning clearance, I mean, out of the zoning ordinance. There is a landscape screening in here. It's 8176-4.2E. It's about in the middle of that paragraph. That needs to be removed. The landscape screening is only required if you need it, and in this instance, it's not needed, so therefore, we wouldn't reference that section of the code. And then to go on what Craig was talking about in the findings on page 56, it also says that it's screened by the shrubs and trees. There's no shrubs and trees up there, nor is it needed for this 100-foot facility, so that needs to be removed also. Probably starting with, let me see. Just, uh, there would be a, uh, period after adjacent parcels, and we would remove the words "and is screened by the shrubs and trees." And then, um, just continuing, so we heard the references that the applicant made to, to clarify the permitted uses, so that would be cleared in the, or changed in the condition in 3B, which Commissioner Wesner caught on the extension of the time for 10 years. And then this morning, I was perusing this staff report once again, and there's a condition in here that I'm not really a fan of, um, and it's condition six, it's on page 69. And this is a condition that we use frequently. It's the notice of CUP requirements and the retention of the CUP conditions on site. Well, normally, it makes sense to retain the CUP conditions on site, but in this instance, I'm not sure that it does. I'm not sure where we would put them, or, you know, if we would paste them inside the vault. I'm not sure what good that would do, but I wouldn't want them to be in violation of a condition because they didn't have the current set, you know, inside the vault. I'm not sure that makes sense, so I would rather just have that last sentence removed on condition six, if that works for your commission.
Any commissioners have any concerns about that? Okay, so be it. Any other, any other questions for staff? All right, I'd like to, uh, close the public hearing and begin our questions, comments, deliberations.
I'd like to move approval.
I'll second that, if that includes all the recommended changes that we've heard from staff.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you say you seconded it based on that? Thank you.
Shoot him in the leg.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
The next item on your agenda is, uh, report by planning director.
Report by planning director on board actions and other matters and items the planning commission may wish to introduce.
Okay, I just have a, a quick report for you, a few things that are going on. The Simi Valley landfill, EIR, is out on the streets right now. The, um, mayor of the city of Simi Valley asked me for an extension for the review of that, and it was granted. Um, it's a 45-day extension, so the review of that document ends on December 28th. So depending on the comments that we get back, we'll have a better idea of when it's going to come before this, uh, commission. And then we also understand the, uh, request for a site inspection, so we're going to have that done also. So, you know, towards the beginning of the year, January, February, we should have a better idea of the timing on that project. We had some items on your agenda for December the 17th, but those two items have been moved into January 7th. I believe we have your calendars for January 7th, and I believe we're going to have a full commission for that. That is the Brooks Institute and an appeal of a paintball facility, I believe, out in Simi Valley. The Get to Excellence Plan that we've been working on in the planning department to improve the discretionary permitting, that is going on, um, right now, on Tuesday, and it's happening at this moment. We are doing initial study assessment updates, and we're doing our public workshops, so, uh, we started that on Tuesday. There was a, a pretty good, um, outreach from the community. I think we had probably 25 staff members there, and maybe 20 members from the public, and, and consulting firms to come and give us their feedback on that. So that is going to be a, a very large project for us. It's going to be very good that we have updated guidelines and thresholds of significance for all of our environmental reviews. And the next big project that we're working on that is the standardized conditions and mitigation. So all of the county agencies are getting together to write standard conditions, standard mitigation measures. Um, so, you know, for wireless projects, it will be standardized, and, and, and I think that that's going to work out well. Winston Wright, our discretionary permit coordinator, is the lead on that one, and Bruce Smith, um, from our general plan section, is the lead on the initial study assessment guideline. So, um, the initial study assessment guidelines will probably be getting a lot of attention here in the next few weeks. It will probably, um, depending on the comments that we get back this month and early next months from the public, um, might go before the board in maybe late February or early March. That's what we're looking at for that. So, and do we have a, a date for our lunch set? Seems like we do, don't we? Which? Fourteenth?
December 14th?
December 14th.
December 14th, okay. And that's all I have.
Is there anything that's going to come before the planning commission with regard to the Cornerstone, uh, uh, application? It's, it was in the Tierra Rahada, and I read in the paper that they sold to, uh, another church?
Mm-hmm. The Tejera Rahada project, the Cornerstone project, will come back before, um, this, this commission and the board of supervisors. It's a application that was filed by Cornerstone Church, and the Cornerstones sold their property, or they have an option to sell to a church called Discovery. And so that new applicant, as long as the application was in substantial conformance, it was about the same square footage, less parking, um, and a new applicant, they can file, they can just continue that application as they were. They just changed the name from Cornerstone to Discovery, and we process that application. That's absolutely not unusual.[1774.22] That's absolutely not unusual. We do land use and not necessarily who the property owner is. So lots of times, property owners come in and are halfway through the project, and they sell the project. That application is that land use entitlement, the underlying land use, and it goes along with them. So we get new reimbursements agreements. We get the new person to sign the application, and we move forward. So that's what's happening. Um, right now, we've given them, I think that letter I sent to them went out a couple of days ago, and we've given them either 60 or 90 days to then revise all of their reports, their traffic studies, their water, their hydrology, everything that they need to do for their revised project description. So that's what it is.
So we, so we're not going to hear that for months?
Because it's, it hasn't even started in that, down that secret process yet. That, we need to get their new studies. We need to deem the application complete. And then at that point, um, we could see what the environmental document would be. At that point, we would do the initial study.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Is there such thing as a master calendar to deal with these expiration of CUPs?
You know, uh, there's not.
I know that'd go way out there, but.
We have been mightily working on this for about the last two years. We, the board gave us a position, a condition compliance person, which we hadn't had before. And we have been building this database so we can find these expiration dates. And now, we have started a system where we send out, I believe, quarterly for the ones that we know about, hey, your permit's getting ready to expire. You need to do something about it. So we are building that, and we, we expect that to be pretty robust, maybe within a year from now. But that takes us going into each and every file that we have and entering that information. So I imagine, maybe a year, 18 months from now, that won't be an issue for us anymore.
I was thinking, as these are renewed, they should be entered in some sort of, if you can, master calendar, so you.
Oh, they absolutely are. And they have been for the last five years since we've had this. But we have to go back to all those 83 permits and 93 permits, and then enter all of that information in. So since we've had this database five years, we, we're crystal clear on when things expire. But, you know, those five years aren't benefiting us right now, because most of the permits are 10 years. So we're working our way backwards.
I see.
Yeah.
Did you happen to find that date on the Public Works vetting of, of that grading ordinance?
I did. I did find the date. I did talk to Linda, and I wrote it down somewhere here, and I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
It's sometime in December.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.